To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Call meeting to order. Prove the agenda.
Sorry?
I know. We'll do it together.
Simultaneously.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. Prove the minutes, ten twenty-one.
Motion to approve as printed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry. General public concerns. Okay, none there? Nobody yelling at the door? City of Bradgate, signed a tax sale certificate and abatement of taxes on the following properties. Mark four foot of block ten, all of block eleven, block eight, OT, wherever that is.
Original town.
Original town of Bradgate. Okay.
You're out for that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm assuming Alan didn't say anything about the abatement of taxes, but nor did those two go together.
Right, yeah. Those tax sale certificates from nineteen seventy-one. So there's a lot of taxes. I've not been paid. And it's the VFW, is that the building?
Yeah, well.
The lane next to it.
Yeah, VFW took care of it.
Right, now the city, VFW's given it to the city, and so they wanna, they took care of this land, but it was always in a personal individual's name that's deceased.
Yeah, it's never been here.
Yeah. So I just think it's a good idea to, you know, let the city have it, since they're taking care of it. As Jase said, two were the building six.
And it's just bare land?
Yeah.
Okay.
That four feet, I've never figured out why that four feet ended up on separate parcels.
Well, there were two buildings there and there's walkway between there, so maybe, maybe the south building might have been on, I don't know.
The only thing I forgot to mention is that Christine, the city clerk.
Amy.
Oh, Christine, wrong town. And there are some drainage obstacles back from the nineteen eighty's. I didn't know if that was gonna be an issue. That amounts to ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two pounds.
Wow.
Usually drainage is not forgiven.
Yeah, we don't want to start pressing about, we should probably have them pay the drainage that ninety-eight dollars.
Ninety-two dollars.
Thirty-two pounds.
Okay.
And then there's a ten dollar assignment fee on the certificate. Um, we just need one check for two pounds to be fine. But I didn't add up the taxes, of course.
Did the city get the VFW to buy?
Yeah, finally, finally got title to it, so.
Good.
We got who you stayed, it sounds like.
Yeah. Then we get permission from Rock Island. I had to go back through Rock Island.
Yeah.
How many years you have been there, fifty, sixty?
No, probably maybe twenty-five, thirty, so. See, probably will buy, so.
But I don't know.
I'll make a motion for the signing of the tax certificates to Bradgate, the blocks that we've been discussing. I'll second that.
Wait, abate? A tax? I don't think.
Abate the taxes.
Is that a good deal?
I think it's.
It's that eighty.
Ninety.
Thirty-two pounds.
Yeah, I don't have a bill.
I'll leave you send it.
Okay.
But now the abating, the drainage will be paid.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I got it. Sounds good to me.
Any other discussion on that? Yes, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
Do you have any other?
No, he'll resend us a.
But I, I'll give you a copy of this if you wanna step out, or like you need that.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, guys.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, we're early then, about ten minutes.
Can you stand it?
I'm glad I came in early.
I know you're not used to that, but.
Morning.
Good morning.
Got a few things on the agenda today.
We'll then get started.
Go ahead.
Let's get your claims done right quick.
Seven, I'd make a motion to accept the claims at seven six seven eight three oh nine nine.
I second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
I think most of them was, most of them was two motorators, wasn't it?
There was a fairly good chunk of that.
Yeah, would be a lot of it.
Attached to the secondary roads on there.
Okay.
All right.
Now then.
Uh, first thing I have on the agenda is to approve plans and specifications for the bridge replacement project, BROS dash swap dash CO forty-six, parent seventy-three. It's, uh, it's bridge number fifty-one for us on Virginia Avenue in the first mile of the county from, between one hundredth and one hundred and tenth street. Uh, it's about nine tenths of a mile south of the county line on gravel road. It is currently a sixty-six foot Pony Trust Bridge. We are looking at replacing it with a hundred and twenty foot concrete slab bridge.
Yeah, that was one, someone asked me in that area, and I asked you, and what, this is for next year?
This will be for next year's construction, yeah. Uh, to do this with the DOT, basically you have to get everything, you have to get all of your steps ahead of time, so this is setting up for a February letting through the DOT. But before you can do that, you, obviously you get approved by the board, uh, you have your funding approved, which I think we did that last month, um, and then you have to follow all of their steps.
They'll hold up on the right of way? Is that taken care of?
I'm, I'm still waiting to hear back from Kivers on the west side, but we've done everything that he's asked, so it should be in the mail this week.
So this, how wide, how wide will this be then?
This will be twenty-four foot.
Twenty-four, hundred and twenty?
That's our, our standard width for gravel roads is twenty-four foot, and then we do thirty for paved roads.
So everything get through that.
Are the things in order at this point?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the plans and specification for the bridge replacement. I'm not gonna tell you for the project, then, I already did. On Virginia Avenue between one hundredth and one hundred and tenth streets.
I'll second that.
Are we gonna raise the road at all?
Yes, yeah. Uh, we're gonna bring the road up, uh, a couple of feet, I believe.
So water runs over the road. I figure with the new bridge, it may not though.
It, it hopefully shouldn't. I've seen it over the road a couple of times in fifteen years, and, yeah, we're gonna try and, we're gonna raise the road up, uh, about, about a foot and a half. The bridge's gonna be about a foot and a half higher than what it is right now.
It's not, understand twenty-nine running over the road.
But it does, it does come up on the road, and hopefully with a bigger, bigger bridge opening, it should take it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, you got a motion in a second on that? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
And these are, I got three copies for everybody to sign off on. The second item on the agenda is to approve the final voucher for project BRS, CO forty-six, parent seventy, PCI for just under seventy-five hundred dollars. This is for the project on C twenty west of Livermore that was constructed last fall, and then we did the pavement patch this spring. Uh, it's taken the contractor a little while to get all of this final paperwork in order to the DOT's liking.
Okay. We're happy with everything, so.
Yes, it's a very smooth patch.
Aye.
I'd make a motion to accept that.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
One quick thing on that, and I'm sure you are, I haven't looked lately, but you know, when it was built, so to speak, did you have rip prep, you know?
Yep, on the both corners.
You monitor that?
Yeah.
You, you, over the, you know, course of the year, you kinda take a look at things like that?
Yes. Uh, is it, is it settling?
No, I know, I think it's okay, but you know, it's just the fact that, how much water we get, and it does settle.
Oh, there's.
I mean, I figured that's one thing that you kinda look at. When I looked at that when it's first ever done, I looked at it and thought, you know, it looked fine, but you know, I was just thinking, is that gonna be a concern where, you know, that over time, when it settles and the amount of water going past, that does it need to be added to?
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, we'll keep an eye on it, as well as our bridge inspectors come in every two years.
Well, that's not the bridge anymore, so.
But it's longer than twenty feet.
Okay.
Or it's wider from, wider than twenty feet, so they still inspect it.
So I just, you know, just a pragmatic thought to look at the, you know.
We'll add, we'll add more over time.
That's what I, yeah.
As it settles, or, usually it's big enough it doesn't wash away, but.
No, it doesn't, but like, it settles, and who knows?
Yeah.
Hopefully maybe won't be as much water as we have been, but.
Right.
It can do. So, no, otherwise it's, it's really nice, smooth, it's a nice crossing.
Yeah, it, it turned out really well.
It did, very nice.
Okay. Um, third item on the agenda is to set a hearing date to vacate Kentucky Avenue from the southeast corner of section twenty-seven, north eleven hundred and fifty-five feet. Uh, and this is all in Corinth Township. This is, basically it's a, it's a private lane that goes to Dave and Pam Stockdale's house. There's about nine of these throughout the county. We're gonna try and clear them off as we get approval from the property owners. Uh, Dave's been working on these for the better part of the last six, eight years, talking to property owners and, and going through the, I guess, the steps as far as, uh, getting a hearing date done, and getting these vacated and getting them pulled off of the, the county road system. Um, yeah. We, we've talked to Dave, we've talked to lanes, we've talked to Hawks, basically everybody's signed off on it. It's just a formality now as far as.
They'll be published during?
They're certainly unhappy with it, they'll show up at the public hearing.
Right, yep.
But you said previous prior to, like you said, Dave Stockdale's land, but people.
Dave has talked to the, to the property owners, I'll have Dave here when we actually have the hearing, 'cause he's more familiar with this. Um, but he's talked to Stockdale, usually Stockdale removes his own snow anyway, um, so he doesn't have a problem with that. There's an existing easement already in place between Hawks and Stockdale's for, uh, dual access of this roadway. Uh, I've talked to John Beatty, and he said that that is fine, uh, language, where if we vacated it, they've already got the easement in place, so.
So the road will actually completely disappear, so that'll just be a private lane?
That'll be a private lane, yeah. So we'll remove the stop sign and the dead end sign, and probably put up a sign that just says private lane.
Okay. And there's, I bet you mentioned there's several of these throughout the county.
There's, yeah, I think there's nine left. Um, if we eliminate this one, we'll be.
That'd be one a couple of years ago, I hear, by the driving strip.
Yes.
Will it be published up for the paper or anything, set the hearing date or what?
I suppose we do.
Yeah.
I, I, I think we have to, we have to publish in the paper, uh, we have to send by certified mail, all adjacent property owners, utilities, and the Iowa DOT, so.
So how far out do you need?
Uh, I advertise no less than four, no more than twenty days, um, just to get certified mail out and everything else. If we do, like the twenty-fifth of November, or maybe the second of December.
That sounds cool.
I don't know, I think about.
Either week's gonna sound cool.
Oh, I know, twenty, I wasn't ready for that.
Twenty? I heard that called.
Well, I heard twenty-nine, or in the twenty, I mean, it didn't come out, in the twenties.
Uh, you, either one, I don't, do you guys have anything on?
I got, Dave, you're looking at twenty-fifth?
Either the twenty-fifth or twenty-fifth, okay.
Whether that be better than it is next week.
Right.
I suppose you want your early slot?
Sure.
You wanna do the date forty? Eight thirty-five, whatever Peggy wants to write on her.
We can do anything.
Eight thirty-five?
Eight thirty-five.
That's it. Number twenty-five?
Number twenty-five.
Do you say thirty-five or forty-five?
Thirty-five.
Okay. That's what we're doing, I want you to be sure I do right now.
I will make it, yes.
You guys write over it.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I wanna just, this is a little unit picture.
Yes.
Are you talking about?
This little stub that comes up to Dave Stockdale's house.
Right there. Yep, that's what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
No more, no less.
No more, no less. We vacated the, the previous, uh, a little over three quarters of a mile, the north portion back in like thirty-five, thirty-seven.
Is there still driveway, lane that way in there?
Hmm, no.
No, they just farmed it.
No, they just farmed through it.
Right.
You can still see an old bridge up here.
Yeah.
That's still there. That's kinda neat.
The old bridge there.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so just, just going to Dave's and then.
Yeah, that's just.
Contention, so just that piece?
Yep.
Okay, it's just a little cleaner picture.
Yes.
A lot of farmers still having access to get up through there.
Right, which they have bins up there at Dave's house from the sounds of things, so they already share access to that lane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
The next item that I have on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county right of way for Larry Trogger in section eighteen of Vernon Township. Eric and I went out and looked at this.
Larry showed me, and one time we were out there looking at a couple of other things, and he said, he, what he's doing is extending the tile through his field.
Right.
And putting, there is a drainage there as it is, and he thought, well, why can't we put an intake to get it in the tile and set it around across my field? And that's where he's putting it right in the pipe in the fence line.
Uh, I think he wants to do it just inside the fence line, which is fine by me. Uh, there's a cross pipe under the road right now, basically there's, there's no intake, no tile. It all runs surface through, through his field.
That's why I say, that's why he asked about.
So he asked about putting an intake in the ditch to take some of the water. I mean, he understands if we get a gully washer, he's, he's still gonna get water running across his field, but.
He was, that should make sense, so.
Twelve inch intake, or?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's, uh, twelve's as large as what we've got. Uh, usually the intake size depends on what size tile he's bringing to us, I mean.
So that's actually only be in his field?
Yeah, so the tile, the tile's gonna be in his field. He's, I think he's already got existing tiles.
He's tiled, and then this is a couple more strings of tile.
He's just gonna bring basically a lateral off of his tile, and so if he brings a six inch up, you know, we'll put a six or eight inch intake in there for him. Uh, it sounds like he's gonna bring it all the way up to the edge of the right of way, and I asked him to just leave, you know, three, four feet hanging up out of the ditch, and then we make the connection for the intake.
I noticed on the application it says county secondary roads installed in.
He asked that we'd install the intake, so I said if he brought, if he brought it up to the edge of the right of way, or, or just inside the right of way, we'd have installed the intake.
Oh, it's a good idea, so therefore I would make the motion to approve the application working the county right of way for Larry Trogger in section eighteen of Vernon.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
Next I have, uh, another application to big construction in the county's right of way. Uh, this is also to install an intake in the right of way on one hundred and thirtieth street in section twenty-three, Wacousta Township. This is Wes Bode, um, David Welter's farm. I met with David last Thursday. Um, he's got Scott Mansky doing some tiling, uh, throughout his field, and he's got one location, uh, same scenario, cross pipe underneath the roadway. He'd like to have an in, intake installed there to take some of the surface water away from the field. I don't see a problem with it.
And I know where that is too.
We did, we did some work last week while we were there. Uh, Tom met me out there with, uh, with David, and we looked at the cross pipe, and we needed to redig and reset some sections, so we got that taken care of, uh, actually Thursday afternoon, 'cause we had locates already called in for that cross pipe that we put in by Florida. So we had the machine there already, and as far as I know, Welter's are happy. I, I told him, I said, we don't always move this fast, but.
This was good timing, 'cause you were there, 'cause that's right near where you put the cross pipe.
Right, yep. So it, it just worked out.
Yep. There again, makes sense, I'll make a motion to approve the application working the right of way for David Welter in section twenty-three of Wacousta Township.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carry.
The last one I've got, review an application working the right of way for Herman Hawk. Uh, Herman came in late week before last, asking about filling in his ditch, uh, in front of his property. Um, I've been out there and looked at it, I know Tom's been out there and looked at it. He's got about a five foot deep ditch, I mean, it's a pretty deep ditch. He mows everything except for, I think about the top two foot on the four slope. Uh, he's looking at basically something to make it easier to mow. In, in the past, we've never allowed these ditches to be filled in because the ditch is there to drain the road. Um, and I guess I, I brought this to you guys to feel out what your opinion is, and I guess moving forward with regards to filling in the ditch. Um, like I said, it, it is a pretty, pretty deep ditch. I can see where we could do some work on the county side to flatten his four slope to make it easier for him to mow, but I guess, at, at this point, I wouldn't recommend filling in the whole ditch.
He talking li- literally filling in the ditch?
Yep, filling in the whole ditch, so.
Um, outside of the fact that it's a ditch is a ditch, I'm guessing there's no water flow.
And he's on top of a hill, kinda.
Yeah.
He's already filled in the east side of, of his property for the most part. I mean, a- any of the water that's on the road right now will run off into his property. Uh, the issue that it creates is he's basically creating about a thousand foot long driveway, so you're gonna get frost boils there eventually, uh, if there's no way to properly drain the road base, and that's why we have frost boils where we do.
You, uh, just mentioned to him that you could maybe try to, he's more looking at it for mowing purposes?
I think he's more looking at it for mowing purposes than anything else. He, he came in, uh, for a driveway permit for his daughter's place that they're looking at building just west of his, and then while he was here, you mentioned that, uh, filling the ditch in, and I said, well, we can build one of these permits out, and I can talk to the board, we don't typically do it, but.
And I'd say at that time, did you mention that maybe you could do a sloping?
I did, I wanted to talk to Tom first and make sure that that's something that he could do.
Talk to him yet?
Yeah.
What'd he say?
He thought that they could do that.
I would run that.
It, it might not happen at this time.
No! Does that seem more, a little more reasonable? I mean, I can understand mowing, we like mowing, 'cause they don't like weeds, we like weeds.
Yeah.
But, yeah, filling in the ditch isn't a good idea, even though the water's not running there, it still is a drainage.
Well, I mean, water runs off the road to the ditch, and then like, eventually, it, it all flows west of this.
I've been getting a lot of pictures like this.
Yeah.
Me too.
I feel like, yeah, I'd say.
Oh, yeah, pictures like this with the, yes. Yeah, I've been getting those, and.
No one like that?
That are on the same.
I mean, if you, if you text that to me, I can post it on the, on the Facebook page and just.
Yeah, and I can understand, well, while we're talking about widening driveways.
Right.
That would be one way of eliminating this, is if you had thousand foot long driveways, you know, but it could, like you say, then the road gets frost boils in it.
Right.
So what's worse? Well, if you.
I did.
I'll the whole damn ditch, whole length of it, if you're gonna fill it in, can I have the whole thing, I would say.
Oh, I mean, I'm like, put around tile along the shoulders so it drains the road.
Dial all the way down through it, so, yeah, keeps the frost boils off.
The problem with, when you get a wet fall like this, you get the guys loading on the road.
Yeah.
And it isn't so bad when they just open up the field, but when they just do the whole field that way, it gets a little annoying for the neighbors and other farmers who are trying to get, get through around them.
Well, for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one thing to get a spot there, but then it's another thing to just make that your load out.
I can see if you're, if you're opening up a field.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Not like we're.
As soft as it is, you're doing numbers on our shoulders.
Yeah, you put a thousand bushels of grain on the shoulder, it isn't good.
Right.
So, I mean, this is along the same line, making a thousand foot driveway, that's why I brought it up.
And I don't know a thousand foot, that's a little.
Yeah, I did, that is.
I mean, you can do a lot with the hundred foot, and I like Dave's idea, if you're looking at a drainage concern, like we're talking about filling in a ditch, possibility of running, you know, if it is, say it's a couple hundred feet, and it's in a, it's gotta be an applicable spot.
So do you put that additional expense on, on the farmer, or do you put that on the county?
It's on him, he's the one who wants to change it.
That's, that's my opinion, but.
But that's what he wants, and it'd be up to him to do it, I would think.
Yep, right. He wants to change it, he wants to fill it in, so he's interrupting the water flow, natural flow, so.
A lot of these places aren't flawless.
And overkill.
Herman's isn't flawless, it's just, like Ben says, you're taking away the ability for the water to run off the road.
Run off the road and into the ditch, and then to the west, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he's still gonna be receiving the water.
Mm-hmm.
It's just.
Yeah.
Whether.
Are you sending the system that you do with it?
You are. If, if you allow him to fill in the ditch, you're gonna, I mean, what you're gonna do is you're gonna create probably another fifty a year. I mean, basically every, every acreage out in the country is gonna wanna fill in their driveway.
I actually want my, ditch is long, our road need to be cleaned out.
We can do it, it makes it harder for you to, to mow.
Then it's hot, if you never notice that. I mean, I know that's an old, old state road, but, but at any rate, my suggestion.
Maybe you want to be the middle of the country.
Maybe slope that a little differently for ease of fall, in his case, but skipping the corner to progress.
I wouldn't fill it in completely, not leave it down maybe three feet, you know?
Yeah, I could.
Slope it, but.
Right.
They'd have to tile it.
I wouldn't.
Well, what you're.
Do it.
What makes sense, like you said, you had looked at it and said, "If you can get the where..." Because a lot of these ditches, you can mow just fine.
If Herman would be acceptable to that, I'd say we just come in and we flatten the four slope out some so that he can mow it.
Yeah.
And leave the remainder of the ditch.
Yes.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
And then we're doing the work instead of someone, instead of Herman, so he should be happy with that.
Yup.
Okay. I will talk to Tom and Herman and we'll get that lined up as a work order.
I think that's fair. And we're not, like Peggy said, setting the precedent of filling in ditches and we're not screwing up the water draining off the road.
Okay.
Good compromise.
I think so. Um, last...
Any other motion on that?
Sorry?
We just reviewed it.
Review, okay. Last Friday, we got the pump at the old landfill replaced.
Oh, did ya? Okay. Thank you.
We have not gotten the, that pipe put in yet.
Oh, that's fine.
So the pump is done. We are continuing to build driveways in Bode and Hardy territory. Humboldt's still fixing tile. We've sent two of our blade operators over to Hardy's territory to try and run Brian Nelson's route because Brian had shoulder surgery here last month, so he's on disability right now. So we've got two of our blade operators over there running. The rest are fixing tile and continuing to clip away at the horse waters.
Thanks for getting that pump put in.
Nice.
Keeps work out of trouble.
We don't have to fight for landfill stuff that you enjoy so much.
I know.
Crossing pipe there, what's the Bode?
Yes.
They installed, it was nice work, actually been a pretty nice job of filling it in with rock.
Yeah. It rides better now than it did before.
And plan on that would be next year to...
Next year. Next year, we'll put the patch back in. We'll give it a year to basically settle and beat in. And we backfilled that all with rock, so it shouldn't settle as much as our gravel roads where we backfill with dirt.
Nice work, very expedient getting it in.
Yep. The guys worked hard, I guess, for those two days. Got it whipped out, so...
Well, that was a good county-wide project, county-wise project.
And we saved quite a bit of money.
Oh, God, yes.
Because I think I had seventy thousand budgeted if we would've hired a contractor.
Uh-huh.
I think right now, our actual out-of-pocket expense is probably gonna be about twenty.
Excellent.
And maybe another ten in labor.
Yep. Still way more cost-effective to do it yourself.
Yeah.
No, it looked like that was a nice project.
I'll pass it on to the guys.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Anything else for me?
Anybody got anything else? Nope. Thank you, Ben.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Need to go land the drainage?
Well, it looks like we should. I like motion to land the drainage.
Second? Go off the second. We all second it.
Did anybody, Peggy?
The whole line jumped.
Trish is here, I didn't expect her to be here.
I didn't think she would be.
Don't you, please.
I thought you were Bill Shrooper.
Coffee, Tim?
Sure, I'll take one. Can I have some of that?
Yeah, I'll take a cup.
The cups are so cold, but it didn't get off.
Herman, do you drink coffee?
Uh, sure, if you got cream.
Well, I can't buy cream. I'm a cream guy myself, but I struggle through it with...
Well, Bruce, I don't know.
I grew up on a dairy farm, made pretty much everything.
My dad was a milkman, so that's all we had.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
I remember pouring cream on my...
Hey, look at Dave's phone.
Oh, we did, oh, yeah.
All right.
Wow, that's my favorite.
Talking service.
I, my whole outlook changed.
Well, I don't know why you haven't been into that.
I didn't know it was in there. Should've knew it was in there.
Thank you.
I didn't know you left.
I quit taking cream though when I was waitressing because one time on the table, you go, "When that runs out, you replace it." Oh, okay, so... Isn't that awful? It's like, "Oh, my gosh, lazy."
I need one more.
I'm the door, I'm like...
I didn't want to look at the camera.
That's just the way it goes.
Morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Hate to tell you, but the football game took precedence over your wedding, but I'm sorry.
You know what?
I'm sorry.
I don't wish to have a grandson, excuse me.
They already have a creamer now.
It was on in the other room.
And that's what, you kept going back in and looking. I'm like, "This is not right."
After being down there and watching it, I probably wish I would've.
Yeah.
The way they played, oh, man, it was miserable.
The weather was nice.
Yeah, it was beautiful outside, but boy, they sure didn't play very well.
You gotta take the small victories, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, what do you think about getting this thing levy?
We need to get a levy.
I think it's a good plan.
Looked through all of the particulars?
I did, sort of, yeah. Yeah, I did.
Okay, that's not what answers we're looking for. Well, it's not been doing the protocol, but given all of the...
Dana and I are working on it and hopefully we can get it to work out.
Good.
So like, when are you hoping to...
I should have them out by the end of this week. Well, actually, the thirty-first.
Do you have to do a software change or anything like that to make it fully accept?
I'm not sure what Dana did. I know we have to adjust some numbers and then we have to do hand, what they do in entry on something, adjust them out. Probably for, yeah, a couple reasons, so... Just to get it to work out right for, so that they'll be payable next year at, for the September pay.
Oh, sure.
Versus...
Get it back set up.
Adjust the days.
So do we need to put a date on this or are you just gonna have this stuff sent, you said, by the Thursday, which would be the thirty-first, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we do, we don't put a date on it.
No, that's what I wondered.
We just, I'll make a motion to approve the levy for eighty-one, so five, eight.
Okay. And the total is six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one ninety-two, forty-one at the bottom.
I'll second that. Good work.
Thank you for getting it...
So that gets us all of the, everything's covered, right?
Done good, yes.
Okay, well, I...
I hope so because...
Well...
Well, obviously, you get the payments and that and then the normal protocol of the March levy. Hopefully, you see where everything's at, at that point in time, if there's any few dollars missed one way or the other.
I still have payments that are out. I don't know how many years they'll go.
Right.
For some of these, they're still coming in from the last levy.
You know, they didn't pay it at the lump sum, they put it over ten years or whatever it was.
Right.
Um, do we wanna also approve the twenty-year payment?
I think we need to.
You want that in with his motion or...
Yeah, can we put that in the same motion? Motion to approve levy.
I'll just make another one.
I'll just make a separate motion that the payment schedule will be out to twenty years if desired.
Okay.
Second that as well.
Okay. Any other discussion on...
Pretty considerable sums. I was looking at that going, "Whoa."
Do we have that in Virginia law?
I did, we did.
Yeah, and that's the second levy.
Yeah, that's just half, or a bill over half.
Yeah. I think ours was a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and forty-seven with property tax a year ago and, yeah, now a hundred and fifty-three, almost a hundred and fifty-four.
Okay, on the first motion to approve it, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in. All in. Carry. Second motion to approve the twenty-year. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Carry.
Woo! Sorry, I was cleaning.
That's good, that's good.
I didn't have this done.
Yes, I think you got it done.
I also appreciate everything everybody's done and Dana in doing the calculations and getting this out as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Well, all the interest has been fairly reasonable.
Compared to some projects, yeah.
Since we did the prepay one?
Prepay and help out.
Both, the prepay and getting this out before March. Very much appreciated that these numbers.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
We haven't had any tile issues out there, have you, Trish?
Actually, no.
I haven't heard any, living in any stop holes or anything?
Haven't heard any complaints from anybody out there.
People have found since they've been doing field work or...
No, they don't work.
I haven't heard any...
I think when you do it that plastic, you know, they snap in, you don't have the issues.
Less issues.
The only thing would be if anything got messed or, yeah, missed, hooked up, but those guys were pretty thorough. They did a lot of extracurricular things when they were putting it in and they, you know, every attempt to make it right.
They were good.
Well, that's good.
Well, that's good, you know? You have it.
There's a deal for Rick.
There you go, have it.
You can have one, too.
Well, thank you very much.
But that was a nice, good...
I had talked with Jim Labelle out here in North Town on Kitty Corner from, on Hundred Ninetieth there.
Mm-hmm.
There's a collapsed tile in that CRP ground or right there in the corner of Hundred Ninetieth and One Sixty-Nine. He said he called in. I got a couple of pictures I can show you. I drove out there yesterday, he's got it flagged.
So it's on the east side of the highway?
One Sixty-Nine, yeah.
On the south side of the gravel?
Yeah.
Did that used to be, is that P and V, do you know?
The ground, it would be Bastian's.
Oh, okay.
The corner there is in a, what's his brother's name? Rex, is it Rex?
Rex.
Rex, yeah. I think that, Bastian.
Yeah, he lives out in Illinois or Indiana or somewhere.
But I went out and took a couple of pictures. He put a flag out there for, and he said he called last week or talked to somebody here, so...
Okay.
And also out there, I drove out and looked at where Dyle, where they're gonna do that road, the crossing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm wondering, does that, do you know, does that go down that ditch, the north ditch? He's got some stakes in there and I didn't know if that went down that ditch for a ways and then back into the field or how that...
I doubt it, it's actually in the road ditch.
Well, that's why I wondered if it was just that they got stakes out for tile that's in there because there's clearly stakes in the picture.
Yeah, they're in the road ditch.
They're in the road ditch.
Could've asked Ben that question today.
Well, it's clearly...
Not like where an intake is going to be.
That's what I wondered.
Well, the intake, according to Dyle, he said it was gonna be out in the field on the north side and the south side, it was gonna be in the, in the ditch.
That sounds like a good idea.
So you got the one, one flag right there and then up here, there's one and then there's one up here, so that's why...
And the dial laying right next to the roof.
Yeah, and what worries me is that all those...
You still go out for that when I'm done with the tile.
Well, held them tile, they clear out, it cost almost a one sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay, I, now maybe number it so...
I went right away.
And on the south side, they're running up about ten rows into the field and I just wondered if it was a lateral that was coming down through his...
I wondered if that in an old tile in the road ditch, she was marking.
That's what I wondered. See that?
It's possible. That is possible.
Maybe we should drive her out after the meeting and talk to them.
Well, they're gonna be, he thought they'd be going the middle of the, like, Monday late afternoon. They're only about seventy-five feet from that road.
Yeah, they're close to the road.
Knock on wood that thing gets done and we can all, but the depth, that thing is less than, I'm guessing, ten feet, so they've come up five or six feet since nine hundred feet out.
Yeah.
It's, but boy, there's a lot of water seeping out of that, all these laterals that are in there.
See, while the dredges are full.
Yeah.
Taking a lot of water out of the ground right now.
A lot of water in the ground.
But, I mean, it's only probably sixty feet from the edge where they're sitting to the road and then he's gonna cross the road, but there isn't any field out there that, I mean, all that was seed corn, so there shouldn't be any issues with farmers trying to get through there once they cut that road, so, anyway, that's all I was curious to know of that.
Anything else, Chris?
No.
Nope. Um, in regards to that project, Bruce just brought up the points on, it, knock on wood, dry weather and it's getting completed, but until, we feel contentious about the fact that it's being completed now versus a year ago. And when we get completion part of that, there are any thought processes on any accountability with the contractor. You know, we've got the, so far with what they're at and what they're doing right now, we're talking about, they're following the amendment to the contract. Because they got in there after the seed corn, they're going after it, they're making good progress, but remember back to end of last year, first of this year?
Yeah, pretty disgusting.
When you said discussion, you know, are there damages assessed or, I mean, it's something to think about, you know? We're not having a completion hearing anytime soon, but we will. And I just, I touched base with the copper, he actually called me on something else and I just ran that chain thought past him and he said, "Well," said, "It's, you know, it's up to the district." I guess the thought process on that is, it is a district, it has landowners in that district, we have real good communication with those landowners, you know, Bruce and Dyle. I would suggest visiting with them, getting their take on that.
Well, part of the deal has to be, it was seed corn. Seed corn will not let them disturb their ground, so that's the reason from where they pulled out to when they could go back in.
Correct.
We all understand that, but they also updated some equipment, I think, and they put a laser-type deal, so their bottom is, if you go out there when they're digging, it's just unbelievable.
Spot on.
So I think they've done some, still doesn't get us away from, should've been done, but...
Well, that's what I want you to think about. I'd visit with Dyle, Harland, any other landowners in that district that obviously are paying for this project.
Well, they're the ones who are paying for it and if they feel like they've been damaged, they'll need to come to us and express their concerns.
Think we touch base with them, visit...
I'd like to go ahead, otherwise, I won't speak for the company, but my, this is my opinion, that they'll think, "Well, we came back and we finished the project and we're all just fine." But by all rights, the end date on this was last year, not this year. So, there again, just food for thought.
Yep.
And I know what they're gonna say is, "But their nature kept them from..."
Right, but we should all have enough memory that, you know, that a year ago, this year was a challenging year, last year was a challenging year, the best working conditions a year ago, they were there working.
Yeah, they're off doing something else.
I guess, put it in a nutshell, you know, do you just completely let them off the hook? But really, obviously, the county doesn't pay for this, the drainage district pays for this.
That's what they said. If they wanna go after it, what it does, it delays the project. That's what they said, if they, if they wanna go after it, what it does, it delays the project.
Yep.
Until it's settled.
And you're paying interest the whole time. Roughly all know about interest.
And we know about that.
So, I just wanted to pull it out well ahead of time.
And coffee and creamer isn't gonna help settle ladder, is it, Carmen?
That's more than I had for my coffee and creamer.
Then, I think what Rick's saying, and I agree in what, you know, the landowners are paying for.
Yeah, and if they're the ones who felt like they've been damaged, they need to come to us.
I'd like to know their thoughts ahead of time, certainly have good communication with them, they're not afraid to voice their opinion, I'd like to see what it is.
Perfect.
So, there you go.
Okay.
I make much of you out, if she doesn't know anything else.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're all agreeing.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Very nice evening.
Hopefully everybody had a good time.
I did.
It looks like it on video, I've been, I've been monitoring you.
Oh, yeah, did you see the video?
I haven't looked at the video yet, I just noticed it this morning.
On Facebook was there, was there one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll have to go there.
Video of Tinsley, she was back by the van stuff, and there was, get out of there, and she comes around the corner, she wipes out the flowers. She had the best time. Damn to watch.
I saw a couple of stuff there via Facebook, you look pretty happy, so could be-
Very happy.
How's Brandon doing?
He's good.
Perfect.
He has an appointment this Friday.
That's what I thought, I heard somebody say that he, or maybe he said.
So we'll see how it goes.
Oh, that's all right.
Hopefully it's all good.
That's all right.
Yeah. He just realized he's not as young as he used to be.
I notice that every morning when I get on.
I was just gonna say, you know, Sunday morning was, uh-
I was pissed on the boat.
It was raining, and I was, I was, oh, I was one of the youngest people on his boat.
You were the kid.
I was, and I was letting all these people go, and so I was like, so the, the steps were wood with, um, lacquer, beautiful steps.
It's slippery.
So I was being, and then somebody was going up the steps and caught my eye and said, how are you thinking? You know how you just kinda like, you know? My feet went completely out.
Oh, gosh.
My tailbone.
Ooh.
Oh, my God. So, yes, we're not as young as we used to be.
You were the one that tailed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you looked pretty good.
It's slippery, you're doing that.
Yeah, it's just sitting, you know what I mean, you have to, when they sit, they have to sit forward, so you're not sitting. Yeah, in church yesterday, I looked really good, I was holding the baby and I'm like this, and I'm sure everybody's thinking- Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Weed commissioner in court. There's your weed commissioner, I'll have to look for him. This is, like a lot of state mandated things, they want a report submitted to the board of supervisors by November first, and-
He just slid in under that date.
He wasn't even told us last year. I feel like I can, I feel like I've improved because that's generally under timing, it's not, you know?
Why, you're just right on time.
So, went through all this, and then they sign off on it, and then return these, which you can return immediately by December first to I Dells. By Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, it's just what they track these things, so. This is a report, um, same as last year, I won't bore you with the different weeds, other than I will mention, obviously thistles, good control. That's what our main emphasis is, uh, wild carrot slash wild parsnip.
You call it wild carrot?
It's, yeah, either or.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, I was a little, so, I made a note on their questionnaire about that it is a, an issue in our county. Well, I'm bringing that up so I don't forget to mention that we're going to do a protocol on that, because the only way to effectively control that is, A, to know where it is, and then B, to treat it early in the season. And you, it's pretty much a blanket treatment. So we're gonna go essentially give or take from about a little more to Bod along C twenty, which Bruce is intimately familiar with, cause he drives there to Bod. And that area is going to get that treatment. Was supposed to this year, and I did get after our contractor, Russian weed control, their scheduling got screwed up, it got too late and they didn't get it done. But it is definitely gonna get done next spring. So that's gonna be, and that, nice thing about that is it virtually controls everything, it's a one-shot deal. So when it's sprayed early-
Two forty?
What's that?
Two forty, basically.
No, it's a completely different product.
Is that that stuff that's kinda like a white head on it that well?
No.
Yeah. Don't get it on you.
Don't get in it.
It's like poison ivy.
Really?
Very similar to poison ivy, yeah.
You know, I have never figured out how, there's a lot of people that bale ditches.
Yes.
How, when they bale that, in that area there, they bale that whole thing? How, doesn't that have an effect on the cows?
Well, the thing of it is, it's an earlier-
Oh, yeah, you'd think so, yeah.
Growing weed, uh, it's usually by the time they bale the ditches, it's dead.
Oh, okay.
And it's, therefore, it's, it's not so noxious to the animals. And it doesn't, apparently, as weeds go, it isn't toxic to them.
To animals?
But it's very like, everybody told you, don't get in it.
Wow.
It's nasty. So, the reason I bring that up, so that's what we know for sure, you need to know where those areas are, and like Bruce has known about this, you know, since he, you know, drives by it all the time. If there's any other areas that are known for sure, we, we wouldn't be able to do that stretch here and a stretch there, but it has to be done early. That's the only effective control for that stuff. Spray in it when you can see it, it really doesn't, it's not like thistles and giant ragweed and such, where you can see them and spray them and control them. This stuff, you really gotta head it off at the pass and get it early, so. That's what we're gonna do there. Another thing, we do, uh, all of the, the, uh, control measures were met this year that we discussed. Thistle control, we did the whole county this late summer, if you will, uh, they call it a fall application. They said it worked really well when they did it, they saw the patches, they treated the patches, we, uh, much better controlling the thistles. We feel we have enough control, we're probably going to go to a half a county, and what they do is, I mean, they don't just go out and blanket spray, but they do drive every mile of road.
And see what needs to be sprayed when they're gonna go.
So, uh, our chemical cost for everything this year is very low, the expensive part is them driving it.
A mileage.
A mileage. So, uh, we really feel we can cut it to half the county for the thistle control, and that is every mile of road in that half of the county. I think we're gonna target the north half next year. Part of that is, they did find some un, previously unknown locations in the northeast part of the county, they said. Some thistles that they didn't see a year before, so, uh, that will exponentially save us money. I believe that we're talking, Don's putting together some figures, but it looks reasonable. We're going to target the hard surface roads for secondary noxious weeds. Obviously, thistles are included in the thistle protocol, there's two different protocols. Because we've been targeting secondary gravel roads and relying on the grader operators who have been doing a pretty good job. No one mentions hard surface roads, cause obviously you've sprayed those. So we don't have any intel, we don't have maps per se unless somebody brings it to your attention and we treat it. So we're gonna target the hard surface roads, earlier summer program, which is primarily giant ragweed and anything else, which can be stinging nettles. They're around in certain places in these ditches and you wanna get rid of them. So, long story short, and Don and I are gonna sit down again as we put the budget together to get a pretty solid budget number. Probably looking at a lesser cost next year, even with this. Cause we had a total contract cost this year, which was budgeted a forty-four thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars for the entire weed control program in the county. So, we're hoping to come in under that. Otherwise, you can sure look at this report, but I pretty much summed up what it's about. We list the products used, there's only two, milestone for thistles, platoon, which is essentially a derivative of two forty for giant ragweed, nettles, any other nasty looking stuff. We will add another product that I don't even wanna try to guess what the name of it is, next year for the early application of the carrot parsnip issue. That's what we're asking.
See, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and nominate you for next year's weed commissioner.
Thank you.
Move you right to the top of the chain.
Now, this is, I, I'm gonna, I'm going to, uh-
I don't see it on agenda, but I'll-
Come off facetiously, and another thing that, that Dave has assigned, and the chairman, the weed commissioner certification, so I'm certified. Does say down here in the fine print that the board of supervisors can't set a payment for the weed commissioner.
There you do.
So I just don't want that to be lost on the rest of the board.
Is that for innocent?
And I do-
We'll take that under advisement.
Thank you. And it says, you have other duties, and of course, I tell them, yes, I have other duties. Uh, I will attend the weed commissioners' conference again next, uh, spring, or early spring, when they have it, usually every year names, and that was very educational last year.
It is.
It was, it was just, obviously, the weed commissioner conference, but it's very, you, you get to see other people that, it's a different demographic than what you would probably see Isaac. I'll just tell you that much. And as far as I know, might be the only other supervisor in the state that's a weed commissioner. I was last year.
So, that's one of the times.
Yeah, that's right. So, anyway, any questions on, I tried to give you the quickest synopsis, it's looking pretty good, we're gonna make a few-
From what I've seen driving around, I think they're doing a good job.
I do too.
Have a really good communication with Don. You know, he's done this a long time, he has good suggestions, we kick stuff back and forth, like I said, I mentioned the wild parsnip carrot problem.
If that works, I might mention some other places that-
Please, I guess moving forward into next year, knowing that program, please look for those spots like Bruce mentioned.
Cause when, when we can spot spray, it's so much more cost effective.
You have to, it's, it's too expensive to say, we wanna control wild parsnip in the county, you would virtually have to spray every mile of right of way, and it's, you can't do that. But if you can, and that's what we're basically doing with our thistles slash other nasty looking weeds. It is a spot spray, but what gets expensive is them driving around seamlessly. You can't just, you need to know where they're going, if they know where they're going, it is costly.
There's no need to drive the miles that are clean.
And their farmers do a good job when they're doing their fence with them.
We do have generally better, uh, public weed control, i.e. farmers and that, as far as other counties that I talked to, uh, they sort of notice, they have, they get into a lot of fracas sometimes with, uh-
I mean, the weed commissioner's a busy man.
He, uh, some of these places, he's really busy, uh, and we, I will say commend the farmers, uh, pretty particular in this county for controlling it.
They do a good job.
Well, that's, they're worth a benefit for us, but I'm not out, you know, don't get me wrong, I will.
You're not driving.
Yes, me be, but we just don't have that, we just need, we're doing our job and controlling them in the right of ways, so. We decide that, Dave, are you to sign one copy?
We're asking the chairman to, authorize the chairman to sign the weed commissioner's report.
Yes.
Cause we didn't know what you meant when you said with weed commissioner's report.
Okay, can we do that? Authorizing him to-
I'll make a motion for the chairman to sign the weed commissioner's report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Already gone. You waste a whole sheet of paper just to put up four or five words? I wanna make sure it's official, Dave, I thought about that, but can you please send that to I Dells? And today is the twenty eighth.
Oh, I don't know how we get that far, twenty ninth or eighty?
Yeah, sorry, I missed the authorize chairman to sign the report.
Yeah, we weren't sure what, well, there are a little bunch of, I've got so many things.
Never want to. That, uh, that takes care of county duty for the state and weed commissioners, yep. Okay, moving on. Authorize chairman to sign a certificate of cost allocation plan for cost advisory services.
This is something we do every year, um, cost advisory services, that's a cost allocation plan, I put one on the desk up there for you for your review. This is to recoup any DHS local administrative expenses for the last year. And so, they're estimating, um, for the four quarters, beginning with quarter ending September thirty, twenty twenty, um, approximately thirteen eight, twenty-five fifty per quarter. So then they charge us four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to do the cost allocation, and they give us two copies plus the one for you.
So this is a yearly protocol?
Yep, every year. All counties are required to do this, some people have different firms, cost allocate, or cost advisory seems to be, have the largest amount for you.
Make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the certificate, certification of the cost allocation plans for cost advisory services incorporated.
Sorry, good.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Here ends the final vote for weeks.
Oh, okay, good.
Committee reports. Okay, it's passed Monday evening at a joint, attended a joint EMA nine-one-one board meeting. L A C E O C room. Tuesday morning, met with representatives from Motorola to discuss the, uh, project, ongoing project with the new radio update. Mainly involving the tower, uh, situation, and just a quick note on that, I will be meeting this Thursday with, uh, representative from Murphy Tower. They have agreed to install the balance of the equipment on the tower prior to the end of this year. Cause we talked that about.
They did say they're gonna do it.
Yes.
That'll get us done, done with the tower update.
Hopefully.
Well, the tower is done structurally, but the equipment needs to be installed, and Rick was at that meeting, and basically, this is all a fresh new thing. This new radio, statewide radio system, I think they admitted at that meeting, they missed some of the things, like tower renovation and equipment installation.
Yeah, that's, they're finding that's happening all over the state. They never thought about these towers weren't built to add another big old dish on them. So, and then something with the five, this new five G thing coming into the state for cell phones, all the tower companies are working for these people, cause they pay twice as much as what Motorola is willing to pay, or what typically is paid for projects, so they're, they're going where the gravy is.
Really?
Well.
So you can't get a tower.
So you can't get a tower guy to work on anything, cause they're all busy, and heck, with this new five G stuff going out. So, that's, that's the reason for all the delays and-
Yeah, and amongst other things that, uh, we will get a, uh, purchase order, if you will, once they get another look at this equipment. I'll tell you right now, it will not be cheap. Tower work is not. We had, uh, the bill submitted to structural reinforcement was over sixty thousand. I don't wanna venture, guess what, the installation of this is, it also includes installing a dish on the Fort Dodge Tower. Which they will do, and they will line up the site path and all that, but it will not be cheap.
Well, the other side-
But isn't that going to Motorola?
Yes, and so that will come off. But if, if we allowed and kept going forward with Motorola doing this, which is, you can firmly see they have not, we'd be sitting here this time next year because of some politics within their company.
Yeah, there's, there's some issues with Motorola and the tower companies in the state, I don't know what it is, but-
And they dropped the ball, so we, the county and L A C picked it back up, and we're gonna get it done. So that was positive, that was the meeting, Rick was there, so. That's what I had last week.
Okay, I had the same two meetings that Eric was talking about with, uh, the L A C and nine-one-one joint board. And then on Monday evening, and then Tuesday morning, I was at the same tower meeting. And then on Thursday evening, I was at the dog shelter meeting, uh, we took photos, county was out there, the weather, taking photos, met with Mary and thanked her, thanked her for generous donation.
I see they have a sign up, um, you know, at the site.
Yeah, they crank that out pretty quick, I don't know who pumped them signs out that quick.
Orton.
Is that who did it? Yeah, so, and that's, uh, oh, then I had, had landfill on, uh, regional landfill on Tuesday evening too, I forgot about that. Had a annual board meeting there, um, we changed it from January, I think, late January, early- Uh, we changed it from January, I think, late January, early February, to October, because always had issues with the weather. So, I had good attendance. Uh, overall, income for the landfill was down about two hundred thousand. Uh, and that's, it's hard to project, because if you have a lot of, like, hailstorms, you get a lot of shingles. Or if you have to tear down a few extra buildings in the county, big schools and stuff, that is. But, uh, overall, the budget looked pretty good, got a three percent increase for employees. Uh, we did discuss our recycling sorting positions, they're, they start out in the lower end of the pay scale. I told you, no, we're gonna have to bring that up to keep employees, because, um...
Revolving door, otherwise.
It's a revolving door, we're losing a few, and then you have to train them and fit them with equipment.
Second gear and everything.
Yeah, so, you might have to look at bringing that starting pay scale up a little bit.
So, if you figure on that, you might as well increase the wages.
Right, 'cause especially on the lower end, you know, it doesn't cost that much to pay them more. And then you don't have the turnover, because, I guess, they said some of the problems were at Prestige. They have a bus that hauls people from Fort Batch who don't have driver's licenses or don't wanna drive for three dollars a month. I think it is, you can catch a bus right from Fort Batch up to Prestige.
Yeah.
And back home. Thirty or forty bucks a month is very, very...
And the only thing they're having issues with is getting, getting the ones on the right bus that, so they can make the bus home, because when they don't have any transportation.
Home. If you miss that bus, then you're, then you're there for a shit.
You're standing out in the middle of the section saying, how do I get back? So...
Wow.
Oh, and they purchased a, a new, um, pile truck, I guess. But overall, it's, got our new manager, she's, or COO, and she's doing a good job, I think, so. Thanks for, very smooth. Got our new cell open up, putting a little bit of garbage in it to start with, and so, all well.
I had the nine-one-one meeting on Monday night.
On Thursday, the twenty-fourth, we had another meeting over at Storm Lake for the new developed of I W, I workforce development region one. Um, thankfully, everybody was looking at me to beat the Clio. Thankfully, I dodged that bullet, and Kyle struck her up there at, um, Cassutha's gonna be it, and then I'm gonna beat the co-chair. So, um, we're working on, we have to get a twenty-eighty peggy. Thank you for getting that. So, all the regions are kinda, we're putting it together to see what the current one is and just kinda making changes. Basically, it's gonna be about the same thing, it's just more counties. And, um, yeah, so it's, it's gonna be very interesting. We've got to, we have another meeting in a couple of weeks, because, we're probably gonna be meeting every two weeks until we get this done, because the timeline is so aggressive to get everything done. So, we're the first region that got a Clio figured out, and getting the twenty-eighty already working on, so, it's good.
Good.
And where's the city in the west? Storm Lake.
Which county's on the border with that?
Yeah.
I personally, that's all. Just a bunch of them.
Yeah, there's twenty-four. So, it's all of them basically northwest to Cassutha's down. Green is in there. It's really weird how they, and I, I should have brought my, I made to bring my booklet, and I was kinda worried. But anyway, um, yeah, so Green is in there. Their region is split up between two. So, they're the only region, all of the other ones are additional regions all, you know, together, but that region, I can't remember what the number is. They're split between ours, Des Moines, the Des Moines region, I can't remember what that all is, that's Hope area, and there's like four or five counties there. And then to Omaha, to the west, not Omaha, Council Bluff, that area. So, it's really weird how they, and that's what the big fight is right now, about they've got a, um, um, they're trying to get it stopped, how, we can't stop the, the combining of the regions, but they did include the chief elected official in deciding the regions. And that's what they're trying to get changed. So, basically, we're doing all this, and if we do win the appeal, then the regions may change. It'll still be six regions, but it might change how and where they're at. So, it's just kind of a convoluted mess right now. We're trying to pick up, yeah, we're just trying to figure it out.
Thanks for...
Thanks, Dave.
Glad I'm not in there.
Oh.
Okay. Monday night, I had the LAC nine-one-one board. Tuesday morning, I was down for the Motorola thing. Wednesday, uh, at Fort Dodge, that was a long meeting from one in the morning, one afternoon till six at night.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, that was an hour meeting down there at Midas. Well, um, you talked about the bus going to Prestige. They're also working on one going from Eagle Grove to Prestige. Um, that one might extend farther, and they're talking maybe one from Humboldt going that way.
Oh, really?
And they're looking for more corporations like that to make a disengaged bus route.
They, uh, they get funding from somewhere else, they must be, because they, well, they only charge a buck a day to haul people there.
They, they get, uh, government assistance.
Do they? Okay.
But if you figure the mile, because they pay, we used to do that for a jet, we used to get people from Rockwell, but they charge so much a mile, and they beat all those people, and divide that up, you know. It would, if, if we figured per, per person, it was like, there's only a buck and a half a day or something like that. I don't know if people was that much, but there wasn't as many, but still.
Yeah.
They just charge one fee for the per mile. I think it was one forty-five or something like that.
It does help people on the cost of getting to work.
Oh, yeah.
If they get more people in the workforce, because a lot of people, they only own a driver's license, and they're gonna sit on the bus.
There's a lot of people now that don't have driver's licenses.
They're working on that. They did buy a couple, three buses, I think there was a small one and a larger one, I believe it was. Then, uh, let's see, was it, Thursday, we had the dog meeting out there for the animal shelter. Uh, we accepted, we took pictures for the groundbreaking and everything. Uh, we thanked Mary for a hundred and twenty-five this year, a hundred and twenty-five next year, which we can get right after the first of the year, the way I understand it. And we also got the final design from Gronbeck, and he wants to break ground as soon as possible, get footings in, so we can get that started. Uh, what'd they say, by March, they would like to have it done, is what he's looking at, or close to it, two hundred and forty-four thousand.
Wow.
For the building. Um, that's it, the week for me. You got anything, Dave?
Uh, a few things. More opioid updates. Um, I sent you an email from the Supervisors Association, and now I have the form to fill out if anybody's planning on going to the December school, so if you wanna add your name to that, and then we get the money sent in for it. And that's all I have.
Uh, is that on the drainage?
No, that was on the District Two Supervisors meeting, um, December fifth.
It's December fifth.
So, it says, oh, Thursday, December fifth.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I have the, yeah. The same day as Iowa drainage.
Yeah.
Oh, you said they were different dates.
Yeah, they had to move this back one day.
They moved that back another day.
I wonder if I'll be running to other supervisors for this. They used to do it.
Yeah.
I can't remember why they moved that back.
On Friday.
They used to pick this on a Friday, move it to...
But they have to decide between the two, which one you're going to.
Oh, yeah. That's gonna hurt that attendance, I'm sure.
Yeah, it'll hurt both of them.
Mm-hmm.
So, you need to know who needs, who's going to the drainage.
Um, yeah, I need to get that sent in too.
If we fill this out and give it to you, can that be taken care of, or do we do it on our own?
Um, you have to have separate sheets for each person on that one. On the other one, you can just have everybody on one sheet. I recommend copies of that for you.
Wanna take care of that, Dave? That's, sign up for the drainage district meeting.
Get some copies of it.
Mm-hmm, yep, and then we'll just let you guys choose. You can fill out whichever one you want.
I'm probably gonna go to the drainage.
I am.
Yeah. That always seems to have more issues.
If you got copies of that, we, we just go ahead and...
Yeah, we'll get copies.
Oh, yeah. I got a question on that. I got a question on this.
We'll go ahead and get them filled out, so, I think they had to be in by the...
Yeah, and they require us money too, so we'll get money in too, so...
And that was on the fifth, right? December fifth?
Yeah. We have to wait until for next year to check on the District Two meeting, so...
Well, I think more than likely, we'll, we'll get our drainage moved back to the Friday.
The district sent out in, uh, one of their publications that the original date was in the sixth.
Yeah.
But there was a conflict, and they wanted to keep holding it at the same place they always do, so they moved it back one day.
Right.
I don't know why.
Well, why don't you guys go into the drainage, when I can go to the...
Would you?
That'd be, that'd be very nice.
Thank you.
Then, well, at least we're covering both.
Right. If you guys will, you need to...
That would be awesome.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
I'll do that one.
That'll be less contentious than you know it'd be.
And I guarantee you, the weather will be extremely nasty, because I've gone up there four years, and it's blowing snow, your feet are freezing in the car, because the wind's blowing so hard through the side of the door.
We won't tell her that.
Snow, blowing snow every year.
We used to go.
No, it's gonna be a beautiful sunny day with above average temperatures.
I hope so.
Okay, none of you, okay.
Sound like I'm going to the Arctic Circle.
Don't say that. I have, uh, something here that we all should have got in an email. I'm sure I wasn't the only one, because it says Humboldt County officials, from the State Auditor's Office, that Auditor Rob Sand is inviting us to a town hall meeting in Dakota City on Wednesday, the thirtieth, from twelve-thirty to one-thirty, Dakota City Hall. Did anyone else see that?
I did.
Yeah, I did. I saw the email on that. And I can't, and my mom's got documents that I've already...
I even, is it twelve-thirty, one-thirty? I even looked up the...
I thought it'd be very interesting, but I know there's one way to get out of it.
It is.
Yeah, it's certain.
I, uh, looked up their website. I didn't spend a huge amount of time on it. Have you looked at that?
I did not get one of them.
You did not? Well, you're the county auditor for God's sake.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Sometimes they come and get out of them, they don't tell us. I didn't know about that, when was that legislator see their stuff?
Um, I don't know. Take a, I would suggest look at that website, their pie chart, that they call it. Um, I don't, I mean, it certainly is a good thing to go to. I, I didn't know how applicable it would be, might have been more, for me, anyway.
Was it twelve-thirty to one-thirty, was it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'd probably be there, probably have to open the door for them.
You get extra credit on that, then.
Yeah.
If you have a key and open the door for them to have the meeting, that's extra credit.
All right. Does anybody got anything else?
I make a motion. Second, but...
We're playing with them.
Move it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. All right, Dave.